Select officials, you know, based on resident voter feedback, they wanted to be able to say, as part of this overall thing, your rates are going to stay where they are for at least whatever it was, three or five years.
Okay.
Well, and I think, Dave, you bring in some good points because, and it's probably one of the things that I've struggled with, and I think as a council, we need to discuss is, I don't, I feel like all of this stuff that's been thrown at us, and I'm using thrown loosely, I mean, I know what's been part, but I don't know that we have a goal. You know, I mean, it's like, okay, if somebody said, our goal is to bring as much money into the city so that we can get this whole list of capital, because that's kind of what this feels like initially, this whole list of capital projects done, okay, that's one thing. That would be kind of the approach that's proposed. But if the goal is, nope, we don't really want to do that, we want better management of our facilities, that's a different approach. And I just don't think that we've had that discussion to say, first of all, are there problems? And then secondly, if there are, what are we trying to solve? And so, I think that's where a lot of, at least for me personally, my struggle is with this, is I just don't know.
And it leaves us vulnerable to their proposals.
Right, exactly.
Dictating terms more like, you know, the first thing I picked up from Mr. Brussels here is, the agreement that we had proposed to us is not a very strong agreement from the city's perspective, and that's where the negotiation aspects come in, that we've not even gone into, but we can't negotiate because we don't have the end goal. I think that's a really valid point, that we've not asked for the best proposal for our particular action goals, because we said, what can you do for us and how can it help us, rather than say, here's how we need help, how can your firm partner with us to make that happen?
I'll just say, when I read it, it was pretty remarkably rich, I'll just say, I mean, it's, I might want to do that. But I would say, and then as, when you choose what those policy objectives are, that you would then want, if you choose to do a P3 and integrate, to fit it into it, measure, 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 quantify everyone, you've got to quantify, 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 even the things that are maybe, you know, environmental performance or something, customer satisfaction, those kind of things, measure everything, so when you go back to them and say, here's what we want, can you craft a proposal that gets us this, you know, with these constraints? They need those measures to go back and then run their math, and then figure out if they can or can't, or, you know, or come back with a count or something. Quantify, quantify, quantify the results you want as the policymakers, you know, for your city.
So, in your case, who had the rights to sell the services? In other words, was it the partner, you know, the private partner, that basically said, okay, now we've locked in a rate, you know, of cost of services and, you know, per thousand gallons or per kilowatt hour, whatever, now we'll go out and try to sell more of it? Did they do that, or?
They had the right to.
They did?
So, actually, Gardner, you really have sort of a P3 now for your power supply. You have a private company that finance, design, builds, and generates power that you buy to distribute. So, you kind of have a private partner now, in a, you know, in a sort of.
I mean, taxpayers paid for the bonds, so, I mean.
But for us at JEA, and this would be true with citizens, to the residents and customers, it's JEA. It's not some private sector partner we've chosen to use to deliver some services. It's always the city of Jacksonville or JEA, it'll be that way in the end, D. I would suggest that it's the city of Gardner that they're, not some private company, it's you, in effect, at the end of the day, the elected officials. So, it's, the public entity is the direct contact for the resident, the rate payer, the taxpayer, voter, whatever, not some private company.
So, did they go out and seek additional sales, once the, I mean, the entity, whatever you want to call it, JEA, I guess, was the?
Actually, what we elected to do, and not to get too much off topic, but we, we with other large municipal electric utilities in the southeast initially, and it's now here in the Midwest and the West Coast, we formed our own, we pitched 15 million and a hat, and stood up a new entity that we owned, to do wholesale power trading and natural gas trading. So, rather than let private partners take available excess out of our power plants and try to sell it for a profit and then split it with us, we elected to do that with a new entity we created with other municipal utilities, in order to get the size and scale we needed to compete, because that is a national marketplace now. That worked out pretty well, by the way, too. It's still running.
Southwest Power Pool, and out of Arkansas.
Swepa and all those guys.
And then, yeah, well, Kansas has a power pool, by the way. I want to get back to, and I probably asked the question inartfully, you know, I asked if you'd done any lease-to-operate agreements in Jacksonville, and you said, yeah, but it didn't quite answer my question. Did you, have you, did you have a situation where a private partner came forward with a financing agreement and gave you upfront cash that the city, that the JEA was going to have to pay off over 15, 20, 25, 30 years?
No, no, we elected, offer, sure, but we never did a P3 or a deal like that. Because our view, my board and staff, is, we liked integrating year over year inflows and outflows that then optimized the total JEA needs, and to a degree, the city of Jacksonville. So, we would use the P3 to fill gaps that we didn't know how to fill otherwise.
Right.
Not get a big lump sum and then, you know, maybe have it, yeah, do something that wasn't that important.
As a, for instance, so, we know that didn't happen, but I want to say it was the Buckman wastewater treatment plant?
Right.
And that was a, was that a P3 agreement that got that one back up to snuff?
From worst to first.
That's correct.
What the headline said, from worst to first. We got the EPA National Gold Award after four years of blood, sweat, and tears. We actually P3'd the, this is going to be a little bit detailed.
Okay.
Okay, Buckman is a 60 MGD, old, old urban wastewater treatment plant in downtown Jacksonville and the river, that was the main cog in the whole wastewater treatment fleet.
Yeah.
For a variety of reasons, the way it was originally constructed and maintained for decades was very dysfunctional, but it was the key plant. So, we elected to form a group of actually leading global academics, researchers, that came together, we paid them, formed a group, we let them use the benefits of the research, with Buckman as kind of their laboratory. And so, from the headworks and the affluent, to the final distribution of the end, of the line on the affluent, we let, we had them, we let them optimize that, and some really, some really good stuff was done. Private combination of for-profit companies that were interested in demonstrating technologies, and then academics, from, actually from around the world, because it was a big interesting plant. So, that was it. The bio solids, we did the fertilizer thing that I described earlier. So, we segmented pieces of it. The methane collection, another private guy came in, began capturing that to run the heating process and the furnaces for the solids, rather than buying natural gas from a local natural gas company. So, that was a different private guy. In terms of turning over that entire massive dysfunctional thing to a single private company, no. I don't think one existed that had the expertise to do the pieces together to really make it, you know, a high-functioning, high-performance plant.
Okay. Is there, is there another plant where somebody, well, obviously, nobody's come up and given you this money, but you, it's great that you used private partnerships, but they weren't private partnerships like has been, we've been discussing, that has been presented to us already?
We elected not to do any where they wrote us a check up front. That was just our choice.
Okay. What the proposal that we've got is, and the way that it was written, the way that Larry and Christie seem to understand it is the same way that I seem to understand it, in, you know, you've got, you've got a private equity partner, Wall Street guys, the same kind of people that had private finance initiative for, was it Montgomery County? It's getting late and I haven't eaten, so, I want to say it was Montgomery County, Alabama, or was it Jefferson, I forget?
Oh, Jefferson, Birmingham, Jefferson County, Birmingham.
Jefferson County, Alabama. I mean, you know, you're talking about, I mean, what's the difference between, besides the operations and maintenance, what's the difference between that private finance initiative and this private finance initiative?
It's a great question, it's huge. My, I have not personally been there in a long time to Birmingham, but basically, what busted them was, I'll call it financial engineering, interest rate swaps, all kind of stuff, worked around, the municipal bonds for all that infrastructure. When Lehman busted in '08, and then, you know, you recall what happened when everything froze up, and those swaps came undone, and then the settlement payments and so forth, all that financial engineering, I'm pretty sure is what busted. We'll check and be sure, but in Birmingham, Jefferson County, whatever it is, it was financial engineering, not P3 engineering, operations, construction type stuff.
Well, and I understand that, but basically, we've got, that's a private finance initiative, and if you take out the operations and management and maintenance of our facilities, and this is a private finance initiative, and, you know, one that the terms can change on a yearly basis. And maybe we can negotiate a better agreement, I mean, but we are a small city. The terms of these agreements tend to be Byzantine, or am I under, operating under a misapprehension?
There's a well-established, now well-established body of practice, of best practices, concession agreements or contracts that are tested in the real world now for a couple of decades.
But you earlier mentioned that, you know, we could expect to possibly spend 100,000 or 150,000 dollars making sure that we were getting a good deal. So, they're, they're complex and hard to understand. You're talking about a governing body that even with advice from attorneys, I mean, I'll speak only to my own level of sophistication, and I worry.
Sure.
One of the things that would be, we discovered with Osceola and their library, and I keep thinking of analogs, the three examples we'll find, three, five, of a successful, and then maybe the one or two that failed, those city managers, I mean, it's just a new platform, but we're so excited, we've not found one city manager that won't, or mayor, that won't talk or share, you know, direct experience, that could be part of your due diligence evaluation. I'm, you can see I'm pushing evaluation, but, you know, close the door, open the door, kill it or not, using those other folks, I'm thinking, Chris, maybe that's a way to leap some of the Byzantine terminology, but I think Walt's right when it comes to what I'm hearing.
Period.
Contract, final, final, you know, that's going to be in the weeds, localized, lots of issues, but the initial evaluation, due diligence, I bet there's some great resource and opportunity, because the consolidated, the approach to have those efficiencies would be, seems like a great opportunity to capture, one way or another, if they're there, you guys should own them somehow, in the, in the system, you know, if they're there to be taken, that's a good thing.
Just, very quickly, I think it's Oklahoma City, right now, so, there are some of the consulting firms, I'm pretty sure it's KPMG is who Oklahoma City hired, KPM, one of the big four accounting firms, they have, they have a P3 practice.
Okay.
And so, what some have begun to do is, they'll bring in somebody like KPMG that has, you know, consultants that do P3s every day, all the time, and sit on your side of the table on those issues, you know, is there, is there a hidden hook we're missing? Or is there a provision that really is expected, so somehow they'll make it into ours, it needs to be in there, whatever.
Right.
So, they're actually people making, there are P3s going on, there are, you know, brand name consulting firms doing that sort of thing, for, for the decision makers, for the policymakers and senior staff. Probably, you know, would be a good 50,000 to spend, should you go down this road at some point.
Let me, it's a professional opinion question, so answer as you will, but during the proposal, it was pretty much made clear that this would be their first foray into managing all three entities as a P3. Would we be making a mistake by entering into a company on their first time out and making mistakes with them along the way? Should we look for a different partner that's got more experience in that arena?
So, this would be Walt, not GSPI, or someone else. I'd be looking first for expertise within the company, real-world proven, multi-application expertise, in this case, in electric water, wastewater. You don't have stormwater, I think, or that's not on the table, it's just wastewater.
We don't have stormwater.
So, those three, I'd be sure that they had seasoned, proven, done this lots of times, people on their team. And so, maybe there's another company that in this case, if it is the electric is the weakness, it appears, that's in the consortium at risk with them, I'd be looking for that. There are enough P3s in the U.S. on these three utilities, I know that expertise exists in the private.
We don't need to be the learning experiment for anyone at this point.
Oh, I, I would, I would never be the first, when I was at JEA.
Like, that's a, you're pointing off what we had?
Yeah. You know, the old thing about a pioneer and all those cliches, not me. So, the team better bring proven expertise, maybe it's another company that's, you know, in the team at risk with everyone else on the private team, just like design, building, you have an engineer, contractor, you know, all that sort of thing. But I'd, I'd want people on there that had done it for real in the real world of municipal utilities, that are going to be working on mine. I agree with that.
Let me, let me ask you another opinion question, because I'm glad that you phrased it that way, now I can talk to Walt. But in their presentation to us, we had the Wall Street folks, we had Black and Beach, which, Black and Beach is a world-class organization.
Absolutely.
No doubt about it.
I, yeah, I agree.
Okay. We have their subsidiary, which is Infommanagement Group LLC, which we know less about, but we know that they're Black and Beach subsidiary. But then, they want to form a special use company as well, probably another LLC, and, you know, I mean, we talk about minimizing risk for the city, but it looks like they're, well, in the capital partners, LLC, I mean, it looks like they're trying to put as many pieces between actual exposure to risk themselves as they are alleviating risk for us, but yet, you know, that, I'm just wondering, between, between, and it is getting late and I didn't eat dinner. Between the, them insulating themselves from risk, and then the more layers that you put between Black and Beach and the city of Gardner, you know, I, can we expect that kind of expertise that we would hope to get if we were dealing right with Black and Beach? And can we expect to get the same level of protection from risk that we would if it was, you know, Black and Beach's name on the, on the, on the line?
So, I was wanting to answer a utility operational question, because I was a utility operator, and I know Black and Beach to be first class, and they're in your hometown and all the rest of it. And I'm pretty sure they know about electric as well as water sewer, or they.
They do.
Yeah. I will not venture a Walt's opinion on legal structure, because I'm not a lawyer. I know that it's typical, I have an SPE or two for a variety of often state or local law issues, that are important to the public sector and those kind of things. But in terms of what was specifically discussed in this meeting you had with them, I wouldn't venture into that territory, I'm not a lawyer. But SPEs and such are common in these entities, for a variety of good reasons on both sides of the table. But that's what I know.
So, what, who paid you for your trip here, and what do you hope to gain?
We, so, we're funded from conferences and training. We are hopeful, later this year, to begin offering through several universities, P3 training and certification for public sector officials. Someone's going to do that, and so, we intend to do that. And so, doing this kind of work we're doing around the country, it's building our practice, building our knowledge base, getting to know people, that we would hope in due course, if they choose to use P3s, would come to our training classes, or take the distance learning certification for procurement, you know, through some university or that sort of thing. So, so.
Paid your own way.
Yeah, we have to pay their own way. We're staying at the hamper then, and, yeah, yeah.
But you were invited by.
I think, yeah, the mayor found us through his web research and so forth, or maybe Melissa or somebody called us up and, and it, with me, it rang several bells, in part because you've got that electric water sewer thing here, which I know a lot about and I'm very interested in, I think it'll be one of the key areas, but, yeah, that's what we're doing. So, we fund the GSPI startup, five of us, and so, we, yeah. But we believe that educational thing's going to be big, and somebody's going to do it, so we hope it's us.
All right. Anything else?
We're having a conference in Jacksonville on March 2nd, which is going to involve the JEA and the.
Oh, well, actually, yes. Invitation-only, limited attendance, but the six, but we'll give you all some seats, no charge for any public sector, it's, the six counties, including Jacksonville, so all the public sector people, the sheriffs, the task collectors, the utilities, the ports, the airports, transit, the mass transit, we're bringing in six case studies from around the country that we think are really best in class. And so, about 110 public officials will come together for four hours on Friday, March 2nd, and we're just going to load them up with what's working and what's not. There'll be a failure in there as well, send somebody, and we'll hold a seat for you. It's no charge, public sector officials is our model. It's going to be, I'm, we're biased, it's going to be pretty good, pretty good stuff.
You're going to find us, though, an example or two of a 19,000-person city with water, wastewater, and electric utilities?
Well, actually, St. Augustine, Florida, Putnam County, Florida, and Palatka, Florida, have their own utility smaller than yours, and they're, and they're coming.
No, I know, but they.
They'll provide us layers, in case.
They've done a public-private partnership?
No, but they have issues, and they're considering that.
What issues do they have?
It's everything we've talked about. Pushed back on rate increases, EPA breathing down their neck, worn out with, you know, bond issues.
But in the meantime, you'll be able to find us an example of somebody just like us.
Oh, yeah.
That's in existence today.
And a public-private partnership already.
Yes, in the municipal utility space, electric water sewer.
All right, and you have Walt's contact info, actually, you just have the website in our CAF, but.
Yeah, and so, we'll send our email addresses and maybe to you, passing it around.
Perfect.
And email calls anytime, that's what we do. And we have, we have a national advisory council around the country, and so, that know a lot about specific areas that we'll make available to you.
Appreciate you very much.
I, for one, have found this very beneficial.
Thank you. My pleasure. Thanks for asking.
Thank you.
Enjoyed it?
Thank you.
All right.
Great thing to get home before you get supper.
Yeah, I really got one set to go. Now, the party's actually, remember, it's Friday.
Yeah.
Well, you got to hurry, too.
I don't have anything booked up in the morning, so.
Bring it already.
You have it in your wallet?
Yeah.
Oh, dear.
Well, I'm, 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 good.
Good.
Enjoy the.
I'm going to learn something.
He can come back sometime for reenactment.
I've never heard that.
Bear on track.
I never got.
We're going right now to Mayor's, really.
Make sure that.
Make some of the decisions.
Mr. Gray, you're, I'm a little like a horse.
I'm not like that.
I believe that, because, uh, well, I believe that.
You need to come back, you need a good checkup.
I'm still here.
There's a problem.
There's a problem.
I believe in all the, I believe in, you know, beautiful, I've got a lot of, you know,
I believe in.
I believe in your mayor's, that it's a chance for you to evaluate your process.
Yeah.
He's a real man.
He's a good man.
I believe in your mayor's, that it's a chance for you to evaluate your process.
Yeah.
He's a real man.
He's a good man.
I believe in your mayor's, that it's a chance for you to evaluate your process.
Oh, we've got, we've got, you know, we're talking about, my fault, yeah, we're talking
about, you know, what's, yeah, later.
What's, uh, the, the growth in the northwest, because we, we, I know what I should be seeing.
How you can do a subject in the matter, in the ground, but I was thinking, there must
be some huge thing you've got to do, but you don't have bond capacity.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, all of a sudden, the, yeah, it's just waiting.
A city of 19,000.
Wait for it to happen, now, you know, you're not, I mean, that's, you know, you
know, it's going to be, that kind of, that kind of movement up and up in the rise, or
how.
No, it doesn't, it's, you know, because there's room, I understand, for like 20,
25 years of future, there's too many, I guess, I'm, 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 the problem is, he's
working through the empty.
Which, and we explained.
That they've got, right, they, so, it sounds like they were getting at, I mean, it's not a counting issue, it's, I mean, you know, property values down, your costs are all, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm getting, you know, I mean, they're starting, they're trying to win the business, you know, but I was just, hey, what can we do, like, to one lot of stuff, to better manage costs, that, you know, you know, you know, you know, we got that debt, we got, you know, we got that debt.
I'm, 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 yeah.
I'm, 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 yeah.
So, I mean, that's, I mean, that has been, that's been, that's been, projects, we kicked our, mill levy up six and a half, points, we don't need any better, like, shape, cover on, so, you know, that's where the, down the line, we're, we're, good.
Pop that right now, right now, right now.
So, I mean, those are the options that were provided, that, you know, that's the only way, that's the only way, maybe putting those positions under the help of the naked government, that's going to, that's going to, that's fine, too.
That's fine, too.
If you wanted to build a, and there was something going wrong, you know, we can be about it, that might be a, you know, like, they, right now, and, you know, and so, we've got, we've got the payment, yeah, on an annual basis, that's fine, too, however, however that, that project, hey, you know, this is our first, and they tell you what a victory is, you know, you know, we started, we started looking at it, and, you know, your name, T Mayor, that we didn't, so, 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 you look for the, we, 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 we service 15 billion, so, the due diligence process to get to the gate, every day, every time, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, you know, within our, 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 we're letting them, we're letting them, so, probably not a bad, take it, yeah, take it, that's a, that's kind of nice, and so, you do have this opportunity, they believe, they think, they think, they think, and Alinda's done, and Alinda's done this, right, they've got, you know, they've got this investment, UK.
They kept, they kept, they kept, they kept, it was, it was, you know, cost of energy, so, and, you know, and they're looking at, the way, they pay, you know, they're looking at, you know, they're looking at, you know, a, 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 a state, a, 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 you know, it's not, you know, so, what, obviously, I mean, you know, the, 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 the,